... I want to call the council meeting to adjourn. Do you mind if I interrupt?
I'm glad to be here.
United States of America, to the Republic of America, on a nation of your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Here.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Here.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
Chief Miami director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Chief Black?
Here.
Deputy Deputy Chief Allen?
Here.
I'm sorry. Chief? Why are you doing this to me? And he's in here.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before this proceed, I'd like to request that we remove consideration of approval of ordinance twenty dash oh nine, chapter eight seventy-seven, recreation on marijuana, and move it to a council meeting in the future.
We have a motion. Is there support?
I have support.
Is there a motion of support? Any discussion?
I would have preferred that you said work session, but if you want to say council meeting, we'll just push it out for another council meeting. It's fine, too.
You could amend that to say the next work session, council session.
Anything else? Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
No.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Citizens' comments on agenda related items. Are there any citizens who would like to comment on agenda related items? Sing now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked for the next round, the consent agenda is considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item in the consent agenda removed or taken up during the regular portion of the week. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoice, cash balance, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session, consideration of board of director candidates to be amended, um, living property. Is there anybody who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? Any council member? At this time, council may take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Second, please take the roll.
Point, point. Who was the most important? Let me remember who was the most important. Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Chief Josh Class, I believe we have a new person in our business.
We do. Thank you for having me tonight. Just want to introduce a newest member of our police department, Chase Barber. Chase comes to us from McVay, Michigan, and he has success to navigate our training process. Tonight is his second night at work, and he has begun his field training program, which will last about sixteen weeks. So, introducing Chase Barber, newest officer.
I hope you like to hunt and fish.
Absolutely.
Do you want to tell us anything about yourself?
Um, not much to tell. I'm a small town, nowhere. Worked far and jobs my whole life, went to Kirkland Community College, and played around, and finally got a job. So, I'm green under the, by the years, but I'm eager and I'm ready to learn and work, so.
Well, thank you very much for choosing Madison to be your first job. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Consideration of request to create an obsolete property rehabilitation act over the district through the property located at four forty River Street. Deputy Condo signed a purchase agreement for the former board house, left one located at four forty River Street. The city assessment building officials have determined that this property is functionally obsolete and voided, qualifying for the obsolete property rehabilitation act, otherwise from the solid program. Mister Condo is interested in rehabilitating the property. For council to consider Mister Condo's request for the Oprah, if us first establish an Oprah district that encompasses at a minimum the property located at four forty River Street, once done, council could then act on the request of the Oprah for the property. At this time, council could take action to direct staff to draft a resolution for council that establishes an Oprah district that encompasses the property at four forty River Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second and discussion.
I don't think there's any doubt in anyone's mind that this is a building that is obsolete and voided, and just looking forward to having something new and exciting in its place.
Anyone else? Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a partial split in combination of five oh five Fourth Street. The county department has looked over this split and feels that it meets all zoning requirements to be a valid split. As long as the split continues with what is shown in the survey, and the combination takes place at five oh five Fourth Street, parcel number fifty-one dash fifty-one dash three four one dash seven oh one dash oh three. The split in combination requires city council approval in the preparation and submission of a letter to, by the city staff, to the county equalization department to authorize a partial split and combination. A copy of the letter and supporting documents will also be provided to the applicant. The county equalization department will then process the request and update the next schedule accordingly. At this time, council could take action to approve the partial split in combination at five oh five Fourth Street, and authorize city staff to prepare the letter to the county equalization department and authorize a partial split, to authorize a partial split and combination. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I have a motion of a second and discussion. Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, consideration of adopting a purchase of a twenty twenty ambulance. The city of Madison Fire Department is requesting to replace the hour five and eighteen-year-old reserve ambulance and purchase a twenty twenty P L custom classic one seventy type one ambulance from Hall Fire for two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The construction of the new ambulance was publicly bid with two model bids received as follows. Hall Fire was two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. O DAC emergency vehicles was two hundred and sixty-seven, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty P L custom classic one seventy type one ambulance from Hall Fire in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the low bidder, Hall Fire.
Motion approved.
Second.
Hearing, I, hearing, and second. Elsa? Any discussion?
Um, just a question. I just want to know if those six thousand, one hundred dollar differences between these two bids, if there was any way else. I'm just curious.
Most different from what we can see is some of the specs were a little different. There was a, a different style of styrene. They were very minimal in changes just between two vendors. There's nothing, everything was apple for apple when it came down to this fact. It was just a matter of cost difference between the two trucks.
And you were satisfied with that?
Yeah. I mean, we went, we were, either ambulance would have been a very good choice. This one happened to be the better price for the ambulance than it's everything that we put in this back four, so.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Chief, what was, what was the budget and the amount that we had for ambulance?
I believe we had two sixty-five or two seventy is where it was at. It would be a few hundred.
Thank you. Chief, what do you plan to do with the, the obsolete ambulance?
That will probably go up for an open bid. We'll put together a package and put it up for bids for the public.
Were you able to utilize any of the equipment from the old ones or the new ones?
What we ended up doing was the cot that was in it was an older model, it's about nine years old, and we were initially looking at renovating and upgrading that, and after talking with the striker, we'd be putting this, putting that money into an existing cot that it wasn't really that cost effective in the long run, and it didn't have any warranty. So, we ended up taking the cot in on a trade-in, got some money for that, bought on twenty-five hundred on that. So, we somewhat stripped that down, and then the ambulance will get sold off. With the day of the process.
Any other questions?
I have a question. What do you do with the funds that are from the fully ambulance that you're going to sell?
I believe I think that goes back into the motor pool fund is where that sale money goes from that one.
Why can't you use it for equipment? Like stuff that you need?
And it's the process, and maybe I can answer that a little bit better.
I can't see you guys doing that, that, no way.
Councilmember Subs, they tell, we've always put the proceeds of these vehicles that are funded over the motor pool back into the motor pool. How does that buy the money?
So, how long does it sit before you auction it off? Because I know that we had this conversation a couple of months ago about the trucks for the D P W, and there was cars that needed to be auctioned off, and it's October, and they're still sitting there.
So, we just had a motor pool meeting earlier today, actually, to be talked through, and I think Jeff is going to be arranging to have an auction of the vehicles that he has. Whether or not we'll include this ambulance depends on the timing of that, and then we get the new one, but I know there's seven vehicles, maybe a piece of equipment, and we're probably going to get, you know, auction started for those and other surplus equipment that we have. I don't know if that'll happen yet this fall or if it'll be in the spring.
Okay, but I'm just trying to figure out, because if cars sit for so long, they depreciate. So, if it's already, they've been sitting there since last year, and they're going to sit here until late fall, early spring, and they have somebody that wants to purchase that ambulance, why can't they use that?
Well, they certainly, they certainly, if they have a buyer lined up that's through an approved bidding process, and they wanted to sell that earlier, they could. Normally, the auctioneers want to have a certain number of cars, you know, to make it work for a while, if they're doing it onsite, but there's other methods to move those cars. It just depends on, you know, what truck they want to go. But, but again, the surplus proceeds, they were paid for out of the motor pool, so we put them back into the motor pool to help with that sustainability of that, rather than putting it back into the departments.
Okay. Thank you.
And we are looking at approximately about two hundred day deal, so that puts into that kind of, if, if.
Anybody else? Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Consideration of closing of city hall during future elections and for all non-election related businesses, and allow city employees to be trained and certified to work as election inspectors. The city clerk would like city hall to be closed for all non-election related business on election day, and would like permission to have city employees trained and certified to work as election inspectors on election days if needed. Currently, city hall is closed for business on Wednesday. This would change to Tuesdays on any week when there was, when there is to be an election. At this time, council could take action to approve the closing of city hall during future election for non-election related business, and allow city employees to be trained and certified to work as election inspectors for future elections. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second and discussion.
I just want to take a moment and, and thank Heather and the rest of the city staff who's going to be working on this, because I, I know you, you've had quite a rollercoaster ride this spring and summer with COVID nineteen restrictions and, and trying to balance workloads, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for sticking with it and figuring out a way to get this done. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And we'd be happy to have more.
We do, yes. Well, with the training that I'm doing this week, the county clerk prepares the training, and then it's actually virtual, of course, this year, so the, the workers can go on Zoom to take that training, and they don't have the ability to go in, so they can come in through the, through the city hall, and we'll show it to them one by one. But I believe available trainers, we should be good this training.
Anybody else?
I, I just, I just think that this is a great idea, and I would suggest that maybe we submit this as a best practice for other municipalities.
Heather, I also want to thank you for being able to foresight to make sure that all our citizens have an opportunity to vote, and having a plan B is never a bad thing. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of constructing single dumpster enclosures in three locations within the city parks. City council has approved the planning commission to begin enforcement of dumpster enclosures within the city. The city has three dumpsters, one on Fifth Avenue Beach and two under Street Beach, which are out of compliance. Gerber construction has recently completed construction for the D D A enclosures. The same design and material could be constructed at the beaches by issuing a change order for the existing Gerber contract. The cost is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars each, totaling forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. The cost of the improvements would utilize a loan from the general fund balance to the refuse fund. At this time, council could take action to approve the change order with Gerber construction in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars to construct three single stall dumpsters per ounce. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I have questions. I don't know. So, that, I don't know. I'm just wondering, like, why they're out of compliance and what they're, what is it now that they're enclosed?
Those dumpsters have been in the same locations since I was a kid, so I'm not sure which came first, the dumpsters or the, the ordinance that requires them. But previous discussions with city council and the planning department highlighted that we have, we do have three that are not enclosed and do not meet those requirements. So, in discussions with, with the city manager, we feel that if the city's going to proceed with enforcement on commercial businesses, we require them to follow that ordinance, but the city should take the lead and make sure that ours are compliant as well.
Okay. What are they, what are you, I'm just wondering why it's costing fifteen thousand dollars to enclose each one?
Yeah, and there's different ways that, that those can be enclosed. You can still meet the, the requirements of the ordinance. You could put up wood fencing, you could put up probably chain link fencing with slats in them. Those are much, much less than cost, but these are very prominent locations within our beaches, and so we thought the opportunity to continue with the design and the construction materials that we've used in the D D A district would be appropriate, especially, you know, sticking out in all of our beaches and parks. So, materials, if you're familiar with the two that we just constructed, they're split face block, they've got steel frame doors with synthetic wood on them, they're very durable and.
So, for cement, you're paying fifteen grand for each one of them, you're not going to have to redo them in five years and say?
Correct. Yeah, these are made for the long haul.
Okay. That was my question. I thought it was like some, nice with some meshing, and I'm like, obviously in the wrong business if it's fifteen dollars or something.
Yeah, we, the design that we, that we completed with the splicer for the D D A enclosures follows the same concept. If we're going to put them in the middle city parking lots within the D D A district, we didn't want to just put up slack wood fencing or chain link or something like that. The two dumpster enclosures we just completed, one of them has a double bay, the other guy's a triple bay, so three dumpsters fit in them. The total for those five days was sixty-six thousand dollars, and Gerber completed them through a public bid process and was a little bitter on those. So, that contract is still open, so this is just an opportunity to take advantage of it and take the lead. If council did not want to proceed with this right now and wanted to construct those later in the future, they could go through another budget cycle, and then we would publicly bid those out.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, but they're going to have covers on, like, the.
There are no covers on the enclosures themselves. The dumpsters have covers on those, and the, the doors, the entryways are lockable. So, in the D D A district, we've actually purchased combination locks that we can provide the D D A district that'll use those with the combination to those. The ones that would be in the parks would be locked with the parks keys, so that you don't, or somebody doesn't have the ability to, to just access those.
Can I just make a comment and ask a question?
Sure.
Um, living close to First Street Beach, I see that a lot of people use those dumpsters. A lot of tourists put their garbage in there. Where do you think that garbage might end up if we don't have the availability of a dumpster for it?
Well, and we've, we see that a lot, too, and each time my staff or myself will, will stop and have conversations with them, and actually what we have found out is a lot of people that have vacation rentals, they tell their tenants, hey, when you're done, don't leave the garbage behind, because there won't be somebody here, just take it down to the beach. So, and, and there is some abuse of that. I think this will curtail that somewhat, but in the end, even if you avoid putting that on the Gerber, you put it in that dumpster, it costs the entire refuse fund anyway, we still have to pay for that, and those costs are still back, divided back through the city. I, I don't have a direct answer for what will they do after that, but, but we're trying to encourage people to be responsible and take care of the refuse at their properties.
You don't think that they're going to pile it up there outside the enclosures, like we've seen trouble at, at Catholic Central with the recycling materials?
There's a potential of that, yeah.
Well, that's a big potential, I would think. It'd be interesting to control that, depending on how to figure out how to keep that clean.
Yeah, we have people seven days a week during the summertime that go through the beaches and the parks and change out all the bags and hang up all that stuff, and then, but that's, that's the primary and really the only useful dumpsters is for, for the city use.
So, whilst I do give a lot of thought to this process, I guess I'll trust your judgment on this one. We'll see what happens. I do have a question for Biden. The borrowing of the money, and I didn't, it wasn't quite clear what the catch was, how that was going to be repaid or when it was going to be repaid?
So, the refuse fund has limited capacity to be able to fund capital projects like this, but it is a, a charge that's properly allocated to the refuse fund, so the proposal is to loan the refuse fund some money from the general fund fund balance, which you can easily afford, and then pay it back over a number of years, probably three years, budgeting over the next three years. It may be an interest-bearing loan, probably two percent a year of interest, and then that way you can fund the project and, and pay it back over time.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I got one more question. Sorry.
Sure.
Um, do you plan on installing them this year, or is it something that can wait? I just.
I'm not sure on the timing.
My concern is spending unnecessary money while we didn't have anything coming in this summer, like, you know, all of our parades and the tourists and all of that, so that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, I think the timing, I think, is to help with the enforcement of, on the commercial property owners, and I don't really think it makes a whole lot of difference from a financial standpoint when they're built. Construction's a different, different issue, Jeff can discuss that, but I'm comfortable that the timing, whatever Jeff comes up with, is, is adequate to meet that.
The intention, because this would be a change order to the existing contract, if council approved this, we would issue the change order to the contractor this week, and then when we, when we build the ones through the summer, it took them several months to source the materials. So, our, my hope would be to get them completed this year, so that next spring, we don't have any issues or disruptions down there, but there's, there's still a good chance that they would complete them in the spring. I mean, that's just based on the material availability. A lot of things are, are hard to source right now with COVID and.
Do you think we're getting a better deal by adding to this Gerber bid than we would have had to re-bid them?
Um, I, that's my feeling, yes. I think if we, if we re-bid this, the potential would be that, that it would cost more.
Anybody else?
I think you're going to have to put a plan in place to make sure that people know when they can put trash in and when they can't put trash in. I'm just really confused how this is going to affect short-term rental people and vacationers down at the beach, so, you know, here, here's a trash dumpster, and you can't put trash in it because it's locked up. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, we intend to put signage, signage on there, and we will have to watch it closely for enforcement.
Anybody else?
I got one more question. I'm sorry. Okay, so, you're enclosing both the sides, the front, and the front's going to have a lock on it?
The front will have a gate so that the trucks can have access to the dumpster to be able to dump it, and then we'll have the ability to lock that.
Okay, so people can only put garbage in it at certain times?
Only the city uses those dumpsters. Those dumpsters are provided for the parks department, they're not provided for public use.
There are, there are big barrels all over the park for individuals to put stuff. They're, you know, fifty gallon, or are they large?
Yeah, they're fifty gallon barrels.
Fifty gallon barrels that are scattered all over the park, where the, that's what the individuals are supposed to. The dumpster is supposed to be for his team to be able to take those big bags and then dump them in the dumpster for the garbage man to come and pick up.
And in the past, it's been misused. I mean, people dump construction material and then.
Couches.
All TVs, whatever, so we're paying the cost of that. So, yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing now, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Tania?
Yes.
Mayor Prochamberbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schamanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtred?
Yes.
Mayor Felinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a resolution authorizing the submission of a state historic preservation office planning grant to update the master plan for the Ramsdale Theater. As part of the Ramsdale Theater restoration object in nineteen ninety, Quinn Evans Architects Quinn Evans Architects created a preservation master plan for the Ramsdale Theater. This document outlined subsequent multiple-year restoration efforts. Thirty years have passed since the report was, was issued and many of the key items have been, have been completed. To furnish restoration of the Ramsdale Theater and position it for success in the future, the buildings need to be evaluated and a new master plan created. The grant application would be for fifty-one thousand five hundred. At this time, council could take action to approve a restoration, a resolution authorizing a submission of a state historic preservation office planning grant to fund and update the master plan of the Ramsdale Theater and further authorize the chief financial officer to sign any needed documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll try.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Um, yeah, I just done the grant application for fifty-one thousand five hundred, does that cover the total cost? Or is there, the city doesn't have to match anything with this?
It's, it's no cost to the city, it's, the shipload grant is a reimbursement program, so whatever expenses they're willing to cover, they'll tell us in the spring. And any shortfalls, the Ramsdale Regional Center for the area will pay that difference. So it won't be at, at any cost to the city. And, and so the fifty-one thousand is just for the plan, it's not for any of the actual work.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I thought that the application was pretty remarkable in its complexities and its completeness. And I just want to compliment you and Mr. Bradford on putting that plan together. That obviously took lots of effort to put that together to that point, but well done.
Thank you. Kudos to Ken Bradford.
Anybody else? Hearing members take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah.
Councilmember Eaton.
Yes.
Mayor Gilinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtay, yes. Councilmember Schamansky.
Yes.
Mayor Cozumbe Balski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Hania.
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution of support for the Manastee County Council on Aging Village Proposal for Senior Services. The Manastee County Council on Aging will have a village proposal for senior services under November third, twenty twenty, general election ballot. The resolution that been prepared recognizes council support for the village for senior services. Mr. Schamansky, you were just bringing this resolution forward, please read that resolution.
Resolution of support, Manastee County Council on Aging Village Proposal for Senior Services. Whereas the goal of the Manastee County Council on Aging is to provide education, safety, dignity, independence, healthy living programs and varied services for people over the age of sixty. And whereas the Manastee County Council on Aging desires to provide essential services for Manastee County residents, sixty and older, including facilitating a seamless transition in the provision of nutritious meals for homebound seniors and congregant meal sites in the absence of the Meals on Wheels program. And whereas the Manastee County Council on Aging has made an agreement with the Manastee Area Public Schools to help provide healthy meals for homebound seniors and congregant meal sites when the military renewal and increase is passed. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the council of the city of Manastee hereby support the Manastee County Council on Aging Village Proposal for Senior Services.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of support for the Manastee County Council on Aging Village Proposal for Senior Services. For Senior Services, is there a vote, available, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any comment, discussion? Hearing members take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton, yes. Mayor Gilinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtay, yes. Councilmember Schamansky.
Yes.
Mayor Cozumbe Balski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Hania, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. The city board has taken action to advertise vacancies through the Compensation Commission, Downtown Revival Authority Citizens Council Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, and Zoning Warfield. Therefore, a manager appointment required a motion, second, and council votes support. Nominees for council appointments do not require a second. After the nominations are made, council votes on nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following is that applications have been received. To planning commission, this is a mayor appointment, I would like to appoint Pam Weiner, four ten High Street, to determine in ten thirty-one twenty-three, is there support?
I support it.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a support and a second, any discussion? Hearing members take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton, yes. Mayor Gilinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtay, yes. Councilmember Schamansky.
Yes.
Mayor Cozumbe Balski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Hania, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. Second appointment be for Roger Yoder, two-two-five Seventh Street, term ending ten thirty-one twenty-three. Is there support?
Support.
Second, a second. Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, motion? Hearing members take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton, yes. Mayor Gilinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtay, yes. Councilmember Schamansky.
Yes.
Mayor Cozumbe Balski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Hania, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, the third vacancy, I'd like to nominate or appoint Michael Schamansky, three-three-two Fifth Street, to the term ending ten thirty-one twenty-three, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I, I would just like to make a comment. I have been very impressed with the way the planning commission has tackled all of these things, the issues that have come before them, I, I applaud, and these three individuals, I contributed greatly, so I'm happy to see that their names appear tonight.
Anybody else? Hearing members take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah.
Councilmember Eaton, yes. Mayor Gilinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sixtay, yes. Councilmember Schamansky.
Same.
Mayor Cozumbe Balski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Hania, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. That was the city's indications. We have an update from the National Director Ed Bradford, Department of Public Works Director Jeff Wilton, and the City Engineer Sean Milton on the city bonds and capital improvement projects, you're up. So council, tonight we wanted to give a short update on where we're at in the twenty-twenty cap improvement bonds and also where we're at with different projects that we're supposed to fund. Trying to keep you going to the next slide. So just kind of a reminder, you know, we've been talking about for a playwhile a number of the cap improvement projects that we needed to do and that we needed to be able to fund them. So back in May of twenty-twenty, the city issued a notice of intent resolution, put in the electors of the city on notice that we intended to issue cap improvement bonds. That triggered a referendum period, there was no petitions returned, so at that point council could go ahead and proceed with the bond issue. On June sixteenth, council approved the bond authorizing resolution. And then on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty, we had a very successful bond sale. And finally, August fifth, we closed the bonds that were sold. As a reminder, we had eight point four two five million of the face value of the bonds, five point three million of that was for new money for the projects, and a little over three million was to refund the two thousand and ten cap improvement bonds at a significant savings. The true interest cost for the whole bond issue, which is a twenty-year issue, is one point seven seven percent and it really doesn't get too much better than that on an open market bond issue. So we're very, very pleased with that and the refunding is going to save a tenth of a thousand dollars for the city. Trying to keep you going to the next slide. This is a summary, kind of a high-level overview of the projects and the costs that are going to be funded by the bonds. The next slide, Sean and Jeff can go into more detail. So the all of the bonds and the new money is about one point six million for shoreline erosion, primarily on the Manastee Riverbank channel, also a little bit over Fifth Avenue. There's money slotted for the North Riverlot Veterans Park improvements, one hundred twenty-three thousand, but we also have a two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar grant asked. And that grant is now in processing and given to look at and they'll be making a determination over the next several months as to whether that's in the fundable range or not. And that's to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Building improvements, which include several roofing projects on both the fire station and some fixing on city garage and the water, or city hall, excuse me, waterworks building as well as instructional work at the city fire station, about six hundred and seventy thousand. There's quite a bit of water system improvements, which is five primarily water mains and there's in conjunction with different street projects that we're going to be doing. Quincy Street is one of those, as well as a number of other, I think there's six or seven of those projects. It's about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar sewer system improvements. That includes the M fifty-five project where they have to replace the sewer main across the river, that's the bulk of that. The marina, there is a project to replace the docks that were not covered by insurance when they were damaged at this age. We had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars slotted for that, but that's contingent on a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar grant asked from the Michigan Water Waste Commission. And we've been told that they're really not funding any projects like that right now, only for emergencies. I guess our docks being underwater don't qualify as an emergency, but we'll go back to them at some point with what we have to, have had to expend of all these bond sales, even see if we can get that grant. But right now, that's kind of on hold. And then finally, there's about a hundred and six thousand dollars for contingency or other projects that might need to happen. Sean and Jeff have worked really hard on the next slide to put together a very tentative timeline and I'll let them kind of talk through the different projects. There's a lot of moving pieces here and it's going to be a challenge to manage all of that, but we've got some good systems and procedures in place and I'll let them talk about that in more detail. So this is obviously a very busy slide and we kind of intentionally want to show this all up once because there is a lot of work planned coming up in the future. And this, just to kind of summarize, this is showing a two-year window for construction projects in the city of Manastee. The area that's on the left that's shown kind of darker, a little darker and gray and the words are underlined, those are in the bond project. The out there's, but there is other construction going on outside of that bond. I just wanted to hit on, you know, briefly for everybody tonight.
Sean, do you have a couple more?
Oh, I'm sorry, actually I do not. I can, I can share that visually with, as well, that's. Yeah, sorry, one I have is kind of marked up. So it's a two-year window and it's got all of our construction projects. You can ignore, you know, don't get lost in all these colors, the color, they're kind of a planning thing between either pursuing grants, doing the design work, pursuing permits, and then ultimately the most important one you really want, you really want to look at would be the dark kind of RV ones, that's construction. So, but it does demonstrate just how complex these projects are. Between either funding or permitting or trying to get grants in line, just makes these timelines tricky. But I think, what I want to do is just kind of move through them quickly. I will say before I start that this is a very dynamic thing. We do our best to predict weather, grants, funding, regulatory departments, COVID, you name it, all have a factor and, you know, some of these public deadlines occur. But we constantly review this, we're updating it, you know, on a monthly basis with Jeff and Ed to add. It just turned out so much of planning back then. So I'm just going to start at the top. The first two are the RE one A and one B projects. Those are, you know, were required as part of our NPDSCAP program. You know, we bid them all last year, we're constructing them this year. RE one A is the work that's happening on, on the north part of town with construction of storm sewers to relieve the pressure on the sanitary sewer system. But that also involves water mains and the reconstruction of the roads. They are nearing completion, they've got their, the substantial completion date is October fifteenth. I think they're going to be very close to it, I don't know if they'll make it or not. They're finishing up concrete driveways and they'll be, hopefully putting the finish course on next week or very close to next week. And of course, doing all the restoration along those lines. And I, I guess at this, at this time, I just want to, I know it's a very, been a very difficult process for all the property owners out there and we appreciate the patience. Some people compare it to overnight surgery, it's very ugly when it's happening, when you're all done, you know, you're glad you had it. So we're nearing completion, again, thanks to all the property owners for the patience and the project. RE one, RE one B, it just says B here, but RE one B is the actual lining project, it's the bulk of the work. They have, they're about ninety percent speeding, ninety percent through the manhole lining, well halfway through the pipe lining. And as out, everybody's well aware, we've got US thirty-one tied up right now because there's a lot of work happening on that main running down US thirty-one. We're meeting with the contractor this week to, you know, to keep pushing that project along. You know, we've, we're hoping, you know, with the same, kind of good results down at the treatment plant in terms of recent rain events and not seeing as high of a normal, an increase in flow of the normal state. So hopefully that's a good sign, you know, moving forward. So that's, you know, that'll be finishing up in October, maybe into November, worst case. And then the RE one projects will be done.
Are you taking questions at this time?
I can, yeah, definitely.
Just, is there a punch list that you go through to make sure that things were done and the driveways are in place right and there's grassy foot between the curb and the sidewalks and things of that nature? I'm just curious.
Absolutely, there, it, it starts out, the punch list kind of grows at the end of the project. You start identifying things and the contractors take them off. But before we close out, we retain funds and we will not pay the contractor till the punch list is cleaned up and completed. So if you have items or your neighbors have items, if you know of anyone, you can contact us or Lucas in the field and we'll make sure we get down to it. But the items you listed are classic punch list items, a lot of the restoration usually is on there. If, you know, there's problems with concrete that we need to take care of, so. There is an active punch list that will be, when we close out, before the, before the pay by.
Okay, great, thanks.
Riverbank, and once we get authorized for the bonds, so starting with the bond projects, we're, we're very close to being able to bid it, we've got our applications in. Eagle has responded with comments, which is good news, we're working through those to get them back. So at least the Eagle portion of the permit will be approved. We have not heard anything from the Corps, which is, I guess, kind of power for the Corps and usually take a lot longer than Eagle does. But we'll be working on those two approvals and then at the same time getting them back and ready to bid. So our goal is to bid that as soon as possible. And then the contractors can work on that project in the winter, we'll let them. There might be some clearing, there's certain things, demo work they could do, but then the bulk of that work would probably happen next spring or summer. Municipal roof improvements, and I guess I could just, I don't know if anybody wants to ask questions, please stop me if you have something specific on a project. The municipal roof project improvements that's in the bond, I talked about it. I won't go through all the different buildings, but that is also very close to going out to bid, so you'll be seeing that this fall in front of council for approval. But most likely that work will happen during the right conditions for doing roofing work, which is hot, high conditions, dry conditions, so that'll be next summer. Eighth Street Water Main. Eighth Street Water Main, and I guess Lumpen, Jackson, Van Veren, so these are water main projects that I mentioned, but they do have the road components with them. We are kind of more in the beginning phases of design. And we'll be working through design fall, winter, bidding, you know, sometime in the middle of winter, January, February roughly. With the intent going for summer construction. One of the things you might notice, I'll just call it off here, is the construction, you can see we have it shown as being staggered. One of our things that we have to deal with between city staff, staff at Spicer Group or just impact on the community is there's an awful lot of construction lined up for next year. And try and get some of that at least staggered so we don't have everything happening at one time is one of our goals. It's still going to be extremely busy, but we're going to try and do our best to, you know, kind of keep that shut a little bit. The fire hall building improvements, we're meeting with Mark, I think tomorrow, to kind of review some of that. We'll be getting into the design with our architects on the improvements there. Now primarily, the work has a lot to do with the envelope of the building, the bricks. And some window and door casing, those kind of items, a little bit of marketing side, side work too. But thanks, just kind of started to for winter bid with the potential for construction then next summer. Fifth Avenue Beach flood mitigation, kind of a smaller item, you know, with the high water and the wave action, we have that flooding. We're looking at ways to try and relieve that. And that's going to be a combination of maybe improving the storm scour outlets from the area. And then also trying to cut off the flow that comes in through a sidewalk near the, near the channel. The details that we're working through, that's going to be a smaller job. It may be bid out, maybe small enough for Jeff to do, or still kind of working on those details.
I have a question on that. Few years back, the plan was we were going to, the DPW, Jeff had come up with a plan to build a wall similar to the one that's at First Street. Beach at the edge of the parking lot where it meets the sand. And then also one behind it, so that there would be two break walls basically to help stop the flow of the water flooding that area. Is that going to be part of the plan or what happened with that?
So, Ed, you need to interject here, but we, so we looked at, that was definitely discussed, we talked about it. If you recall, this spring, they had pushed up kind of a burn of sand at one time. That was kind of a test run to see if there's more maybe less costly option for preventing those waves from fully rolling up. Especially knowing we're at a gear peak and now we're coming back down and maybe, you know, it's a kind of a short-term issue. We don't want to overkill a lot of dollars on a wall there. So, so we tried that out, there's still some areas, like the sidewalk coming in right from the channel that sees water even today with the lake being down three or four inches from the summer. And so we've, we're focusing on that area, how do we relieve it? There's still been some discussions on the wall, it's just like really some kind of questions of cost versus risk if we want to put that in or not. So we're, I'll say it's still open here at the moment.
Well, I'm sure those homeowners would like it if they, then they're on Fifth Avenue, if that could be a fix. I know they've dealt with a lot of flooding.
Explain how that outlet would relieve some of that.
Okay, so there's, I'll do my best to explain. So the storm sewers that are out there all run to the south. And they, they cut through the coast guard facility and they dump into the channel. So that's where the water, when those, when it floods and those base, those catch basins are flooded out. That's where eventually it wants to go, is to the channel. And those, those pipes will get filled with sand, it's a really, you know, it's a tough management issue for Jeff and his guys in terms of sand. But that's the only outlet. And so when the waves are rolling in and the water's up a little bit there, it's, it can get kind of, the water can kind of be held back a little bit. So what we're looking at doing is, what's the name of the street that cuts off there?
Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue, we're looking at going to the last basins on that, that's on the end of that street. And running a pipe out into the marina area that can serve as a relief. So if the water starts filling up with these pipes, it gives it another place for the water to go, it can spill out, kind of like a bagway. So that's one of the problems now is when it fills up, it's stuck to some extent. So that's, that's the relief portion. And then the prevention portion is what you talked about with walls, maybe get that sidewalk raising it and just making sure the water isn't getting as easy as it is. And, you know, I can talk in more details too, if you'd like. Even at my office, I could show you some things, where you could go down there. North Beach access repairs, this kind of wasn't, it's kind of slid in here a little bit. We looked at, we're doing this work along with the Fifth Avenue Beach. This came up when the North Beach access basically washed out, the staircase washed out and everybody's been out there. But the staircase at the shore of Lake Michigan is gone, the wave action is taken away. And it's actually eating under the foundation of the bottom last year. And so we've talked to Soderzky Brothers about some repairs there. They've given Jeff a quote, pretty favorable quote, to go in there and do that work. And I think he's scheduled to try and do it this week.
They're going to start delivering materials the end of this week and begin Monday.
So that's, that's what that item is there and that's why it's kind of pinned right to, right in October for the work being completed. Ed mentioned the Veterans Park improvements, that's a trust fund grant we're pursuing. With the COVID and shoreline erosion, we're, you know, seeing a very competitive environment on that grant. But we'll know soon enough, probably, you know, December, December, June, we're going to know for sure whether or not we get the grant. And then there's about a six-month window there for doing design work. And so the actual construction on that project really wouldn't happen until October of twenty-one. So it's a fiscal year twenty-one state project. So you're pushing out into twenty-one, twenty-two with construction if we get the grant. So that's, that's against the open year, but that's when the women construction would be, be overseas.
A question, a couple of questions on that. If you don't get the grant, are you going to use some of that money to do some of the must-needed repairs? Because you, right now, that park is, is to the point where it's really not safe.
That's a great question. We haven't given up on the grant process yet, so, and we actually could apply for a second cycle. There's time within the bond covenants to apply twice for the, the grant. We'll have to see how it scores and how close to the funding range we are. But in the event that we can't get any money towards that, we could certainly prioritize some of the improvements and take care of some of the structural and the walkways.
How about, while you're here, how about the, the road? Is, what's the plan? And the last we heard on that, that was going to be tied to the, the bridge. And I see that that's on here, but I don't see the street improvements for Veterans Drive.
Right, so the, there's actually, that's, that's, MDOT's going to work on two bridges. The one that's up there is M fifty-five over the Manastee River. And the city has utilities, we have a water main and a sewer main that are hung to that old, the existing structure. When they build the new bridge, they're actually going to drill, just like we did at Sixth Avenue underneath the river. They're going to directionally drill a new water main and a new sewer main. And that's already, that's already been designed and bid. And they opened bids on Friday, I haven't heard what the results are. The city simply will, will just pay for their, that portion of their construction. In two thousand twenty-three, MDOT will do a major structural rehab to Memorial Bridge in the city over the river. And that requires a full detour, likely going to be the entire summer. So what we are leveraging and still having those conversations with MDOT is the detour route or a portion of the detour route for the thirty-one bridge is, number one, Maple Street Bridge. First Street, Maple Street, Maple Street Bridge, Veteran or Memorial Drive, Washington Street, and then typically Monroe Street. The streets that are concerned are Washington, Washington Street needs a full depth milling fill. And certainly Memorial Drive needs complete reconstruction. So what we have done, you know, I'm probably stepping ahead a little bit.
I think just the one thing to add, I think, to complement to Manastee's point is, where it says Washington Street, that really should include Memorial.
Yeah.
So that's, I just know, that's an oversight on my part, that, that Washington Street and Memorial really go together. Those will both have to with the closure of the Maple Street Bridge.
Okay. So we're still talking with them, MDOT simply isn't going to pay for the whole thing. They're willing to pay for a portion of it, so we're kind of in that negotiation stage of, of where we're at. What we did in anticipation of that is we applied for another grant to do structural rehab on Maple Street Bridge. And we're awarded that grant by MDOT, that's the third from the bottom. So we plan on doing that in two thousand twenty-two, the year before MDOT does the upgrades to thirty-one. We also plan for the Washington Street water main and street improvements at the same time as, as Memorial Drive in that two thousand twenty-two. So that we're, we can complete that work ahead of the MDOT detour.
So you're, so Memorial Drive won't be adding to that?
Yes, it will, that's, I apologize, that Washington Street Memorial basically go together and they're going to be coincident with Maple Street Bridge work. So, so we have the bridge up, we're, but one thing that we'll know on the bridge, the one, the one trick we have is we can do some work on it. During the summer, it's going to be difficult to work on the bridge because we're painting and replacing steel. And of course, we can't have one of them shut down. So a lot of that work will have to happen later anywhere. That's why I kind of pushed off this slide there, but. So just to keep moving, I know it's, I don't take too much time on this. The tanks, Maywood Tank interior painting was in the bond. Jeff scheduled to have the Dixon tank, I think, look at it.
Yes.
They did their inspection and their inspection actually on the Maywood was very favorable, favorable.
Yeah, so verbally, they gave us a very good inspection. We're waiting to get the written recommendations to see how it would fit in here. So right now, it's a placeholder. Really, the same thing goes along with the industrial, we're waiting on a, a current inspection on that.
And if they, if needed, then potentially next summer, but that would be one of the ones we'd be looking at, having the results of their findings. Again, including M fifty-five bridge specifically, the bond is paying for water and sewer that we hung through on the bridge Jeff just alluded to. Reopen bids, it's somewhere last Friday. And the plan, at least the last date I seen, is their, their plan is starting that Friday, December first. And that will continue through next, through next October. Of course, that may be closure and very future future work. So Ed talked about the remaining docks. What this is showing in here on this schedule is that we are aware that we did not receive the first crack add to the, the, the version of funds to emergency related projects. So what you're seeing included here is us resubmitting the water waste grant. And our intention is to resubmit it and give it another go next year. So we have everything, we have to make sure. The one item we have to confirm is that the harbor plan, harbor red plan is up to date. So we might have to work with the county on that. As long as that's up to date, we can resubmit for that, that grant application. Moving out of the bonds, we talked a little bit about these, Hudson Cleveland, we got water and road improvements. Now we're getting out into twenty twenty-two, we talked about Washington Street, the detour. There's a little portion of Tall Street that will kind of complete work that's been done there over the years to make that street whole from, all the, from the, basically from the high school all the way up to US thirty-one. Maple Street Bridge, we discussed, that will go into a design phase this winter. And we can look at bidding, but part of the majority of the work will happen in the, in the winter. And then RD two A and B. And I'm going to talk just real briefly about some items where we are satisfied in those projects. But I have also here tonight is Don Breed from Eagle. He is the wastewater engineer on Cadillac. He's been pretty integral in the reviewing of our plans and our specs. And he's also been involved with our NPDS for the corrective action plan. So he's, he's the guy that comes over the deadlines and what we're trying to hit. So we are, we are coming up on a deadline right now for completion of construction. And so the city has requested an extension of that. You know, we started construction, we're going, we're going along and through it, but we're not going to complete construction in the next month. So I'll let Don kind of expand on that a little bit. So where we're at is on RD one, RD, RD two A, which is the convenience, that's the big sewer we're going to run down the southern to Rancho. We basically had a preliminary approval from Eagle and they'll be issuing a permit. Don, you can correct me if I'm wrong, such a great timing. And that permit will be coming out. We've also received tons on RD two B, which is the wastewater treatment plan improvements and restoring to the headworks. A very complex thing that we've been working up for a long time. And we have a laundry list of things to work on and the goal is to get that permit issued by the end of the month. So that's the permitting side. We're dealing with one small permit that's kind of been a, a little bit of a pain for us. It's a de-watering, groundwater de-watering permit, they pump the groundwater out. We've got to manage that, we're working through a permit with Eagle on that. On the funding side, rural development has obligated the funds to have them. We are going through a process they call the letter of conditions. It's the laundry list of items they provide us, we have to tick off. And once we work through all of those, we can close on the long. Half those items, we have to complete before we can bid the project. So that's what we're working on right now, we're down about maybe a dozen or plus items we have to get approved by RDs and we'll be able to bring the project to bid. They have looked at the plans, they, they had preliminary approval on the plans. We're basically very close to them being able to allow us to go to the bidding phase. Which would happen then in the next couple of months, maybe everything happens slower at the federal level. But, so this winter we bid and we have our intention is we're going to construction next year for the spring on both those projects. The, the one project that convenience is probably something that maybe will be banged out by the end of twenty twenty-one. Maybe we'll find out from contractors if it would be too aggressive on the internet, but that's our intention. And then the treatment plan is a larger project and that was built into twenty twenty-two. I don't know if there's anything to add to that, Jeff, I'm going to be careful. So total dollars that are on this page here are, if you include, if you include RD one, the work that's already underway. And you can add in everything here, we're probably over thirty million dollars of work. There's probably twenty-five million dollars coming up in the next two years that we see on this piece of paper here. So it's, and it's a big puzzle piece and it's, we have a lot of moving parts and we're passively on it. I know, again, I appreciate people's patience because it probably seems like they're just taking absolutely forever. And it's just an argument process when you're dealing with an eighteen million dollar project to find a permit. So maybe with that, I'll, I'll let Don come up and talk a little bit about the permitting of this project and probably just as importantly, NPDS permit for the treatment plan.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd just like to echo what Sean said, these projects do make a lot of impact in the city of Manastee, certainly isn't unique in my respect. From my perspective, Jeff and Spicer have been doing a great job and have been very diligent. I didn't set the schedule that's in the NPDS permit. The schedule is very aggressive, especially considering they require the city to get permits from somebody like me. So we're going to grant the extension. The NPDS permit had a deadline for November first to complete the construction. I think that schedule is very aggressive. I understand that we all want the project to be done as soon as possible. But because the city has been diligent and the city and Spicer have been making regular progress. Considering the complication of this project and just how these projects always seem to go. We think it's reasonable and not that unexpected that it would take longer than what the schedule outlined in the NPDS permit mandate. So we think the schedule is realistic and we understand challenges with completing an eighteen million dollar project. And so we. And so, we appreciate investment in infrastructure or encouraged by what we're hearing about the sewer lining. You know, these projects take a long time, even in the best times. And 2020 certainly wasn't that. And so, we, we just think it's important to state of course. There's a good plan, a good design. I am going to permit the work. It just takes, it just takes a long time plus the document, all the answers to the questions that we have. And so, I don't foresee any problems with that. The permit for the convenience, the construction permit, which is the work that I do, it's called the Part 41. I anticipate issuing that this week. And I've looked at the design for the store and the treatment part of the project. And I don't have any major concerns. This is a laundry list of typical questions that we always have on these big projects. And so, I don't anticipate there'll be a problem issuing that permit this month. So, I have the answering questions. I think the citizens have been doing well. These, these projects just, they always give a little bit.
Anybody have any questions?
I think we just want to thank Bradlin for letting us know. We're going to be the first one of this week at the three showing. Thank you for that.
Sure. The delay wasn't related to any things to the city or Spicer. Or the city or Spicer did do or did not do. It's just the process does take a long time and we'll get through it. You know, I feel good with the plans and it's a soundness and I don't, that's great of trouble issuing a permit.
I know that Spicer's and Jeff, they've been working really hard to meet those deadlines. I was bugging them twice a month for a while.
Yeah.
It is a sense of being lax and we do appreciate your cooperation. Thank you very much.
Sure. It's, it's nice to see the investment in the city. A lot of cities struggle with the most infrastructure. You know, I understand that the rate structure is such that this project is going to result in using huge increase in cost for users and I think that's pretty rare. And the city should be commended for that. I mean, a lot of places, a project like this, 2020 project, it caused a substantial increase in rates for the residents. And for the city, nothing happened that is pretty special.
Well, I don't believe there's anybody on the council that does not want to see this project through and have it done. There will probably be a little celebration going on when it's completed.
Oh, yeah. Correct the balance and everything.
There you go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Jeff? Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is not for citizens to comment on municipal services activities or areas a city involved. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by their American comments within the five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read. Is there anybody that would like to comment tonight, services? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Hal Frye. I live at 2264 Merkey Road, Mass. City. I'm here today to really compliment the council and the work they've been doing, helping developers bring new projects to Mass. City. I think it's a really exciting time here and I compliment you on that. But my bigger issue is the blighted properties on River Street. The three boarded up properties. And I'm wondering if the council has had any plans, what they could do to clean up those properties.
I believe we've been, we have been working on that. Mr. Taylor, could I get a update on that?
Yeah, the, the police department has been working with the city attorney on those. In fact, there's letters that's gone out, the property owners putting them on notice. It's being followed up with the light officer assigned in that area. So, we're fully aware of it and we ramped up our efforts in the recent months.
Can you kind of elaborate a little bit on what hurdles we have to go through to get that done?
George, could you fill in the blanks?
Well, I need to give you an update on the status and understand that you probably talk about this not once a week, certainly once every other weekend. And we've been dealing with, one of the hurdles that we've had is the fact that there's been a state building permit issue, which prevents some enforcement options to the city. And so, we've been working through that and exploring other enforcement opportunities we have. And I would just say that the city police officer who's handling this particular district, he and I had communication this afternoon. And we're hoping to hear from the property, the property owner did communicate with him. But we're hoping to hear what the status is of their, their plan to take care of this boring, especially the boarded up windows. If the plan is not something that's going to deal with that in the real short term, then we're going to be exploring our options through court to enforce that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
George, did we get the state to back off like we've been arguing for a long time here? The issue prevents that I'm illegal according to our guy.
We actually, Mr. Taylor and I had a conversation today about that. We're trying to, through Freedom of Information Act request, discover exactly what the state has been doing with building permits and inspections within the city since the time that the city took that act. And so, you know, we're, we're looking into that and working on that as well.
Even with the Senator's, I know we have, you guys have talked about it.
The Senator's office has been involved for several months and they've been trying to do what they can. They're, they're getting so involved with that. So, that's why I asked the city attorney to submit a free information request to the state for all permits that they would issue within the city limits since January 1st. By knowledge, the deadline for their response has passed and they have not responded. So, the city attorney is going to issue another lawyer request tentative insulting that they hold on to those requests from time to time. If they don't respond to this, then we'll take it up another level through our state rather than state senator to see what they can do.
I think we've been arguing over this thing, right?
We have. And I've come to find out that the state moves in a smaller mysterious way. So, we just keep propping.
Any other, any comments, Mr. Taylor? So, now we'll move on to officials and staff, Mr. Taylor.
No, I have to point out to council, I have six copies of the Michigan Municipal League Review. It's the magazine that had the article on our diversity resolution. I've only got six. Apparently, they can't count, I hope they have seven, I'll count them. But if anybody's interested in, in getting a copy, see me at the end of the week. That's all I have.
Mr. Senator Cork, please. Mr. President, nothing more, your honor, thank you. Chief of Police.
I have nothing, your honor, thank you.
I'm all fired.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Engineer, do you have anything further?
Nothing further, but I'll, I'll get a copy of that spreadsheet to Thad and maybe put it to the members.
Thank you. DPW.
Nothing further, your honor.
Thank you. I missed anybody because I can't see.
City attorney.
City attorney, yes. I can see him.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Yes. Anybody else? Mark Pann? Mr. Kowski?
No, I don't.
Jeff, we do anything with MPTC. I was there the other day and they have scholars and big flower pots and all that. We put up cameras over there and you think, they were really up here going up. Yeah, we did my here.
We haven't had any discussion on putting up cameras. We do, my staff does go through there a couple of times during the week and looks for stuff that's around the coal mangle dumpster. I know they're having, still having issues with the cardboard, cardboard trailer. And we've actually, the city manager reached out and asked if it would be an option that we could build a set of stairs and house and just donate it to the cause. So, we're going to look at doing that.
I thought they were getting stairs. I was talking with some of the guys up there, they did that orders there.
We've been hearing that for quite a while.
Yeah. I thought they had, but I don't see it. So, but I just saw all these things sitting around, there's quite a pile. I know you're going to check your account. Are we going to do anything to add with the beach? I went out there, they went to store with us and two people were out there and I want to say this is a prank for because they, the police came along and they saw them. They had to go up there and chase them off. They were crouched down on the way to the house.
There's only so much you can do if you allow that. That's our problem. We have signs out there and, you know, put up flags and, but some people are, I don't know how you legislate common sense. And I don't know what more we can do.
Well, are you going to put a parrot in the ground? I mean, you did one.
Well, the, the problem is those are not structures that are owned by the city. So, we would have to get some permission with, from the, our four engineers. And then the other thing too is that, that if you put up a gate, if you don't close it at some point and somebody, you know, gets hurt or browned, then we have certain higher and higher level liabilities. We have to take all those things into consideration. We've had some discussions about what more we can do with the beach, but it's just hard. People don't exercise the common sense.
No, I'm letting you do the other paper. Also, Mr. Kowski.
Yeah, Mr. McCullough, you have a really good long-term plan of these, the streets. Do we have anything like that for our sidewalks? Because I think, you know, really starting to get worse and worse, there's areas where the sidewalk is literally overgrown by grass from both sides or, or there's large cracks or, you know, the large rising areas where I know you've got a process to kind of shave them down. But it, it seems to be pretty widespread for the city.
So, I'll bring it back to some discussions that we've had in the past, probably year, year and a half. The current city ordinance actually requires the maintenance of those sidewalks to be performed by the adjacent property owners. I don't think the city has, has historically enforced that. And however, in spite of the ordinance and the requirement for the residents to take care of the maintenance, the public works plan has been a two-pronged approach. Number one, we hire a contractor to do that saw cutting when we have trip hazards that are over two inches or half the thickness of concrete slab. We have corrected probably the, on the average of 550 of those each year. The second prong of that plan is for the DPW crews to then go into those areas that have already been saw cut and areas that are sidewalk trip hazards that exceed that two inches cannot be corrected through the saw cutting. Then we do the repair or removal and replacement. So, we have done a sweep of the north side. We have then moved south of the river and have been concentrating between Spruce Street, generally between Spruce Street and Maple Street. And I believe all of the, 100% of the work, I shouldn't say 100%, but both of those methods have been completed up to about Fifth Street. And the saw cutting this year went down the entire length of Maple Street. There was so much of it that it used up the whole annual budget. But we're continuing, we'll continue down to 12th Street to the city limits. Then we'll start back at River Street and we'll start working between Maple and 31, continue south, and then we'll begin east of the highway.
Would it be possible to put an article together to, again, you're saying that it's a homeowner's responsibility, possibly make homeowners know that they have these responsibilities? And how they can go about getting their sidewalks repaired, what the process would be and who they would contact? That might help a little bit, at least with some.
Okay.
Thanks. Also, I have, first.
Let's finish with the call. Mr. Cooper.
Hi. You forgot my name.
I've never been, no, I didn't. I just need to use my.
No. I have been getting a lot of phone calls about short-term rentals and some marijuana district. I'll start with the short-term rentals. I, I really have listened and, and taken in every one of the planning permission meetings that they've had on short-term rentals. And there's been quite a, quite a bit of rhetoric going back before. We've got strong support from a number of people who own short-term rentals on, and how valuable they are and how much they contribute to the city. On the other hand, I think it raises my constituents in my area. And I just want to tell everybody that, you know, when the rents go home, short-term rentals empty out in the fall. The full-timers are still here. We still want to enjoy the same things that vacationers enjoy. We like to enjoy the beach. We like to go to restaurants. And we support the businesses during the winter. And I think we should be really pretty proud of our city for stepping up and ordering so many takeout when the state home orders went into effect. So, the full-time people, let's not forget them. They don't want to eliminate short-term rentals. We just need to find a balance. And of course, I've had a lot of phone calls and comments about the marijuana establishments. But unfortunately, I have not had anybody calling me and saying that they want unlimited retail adult usage in our lot and the marijuana district. So, that's it for me.
Mr. President?
I got a couple of questions. I got a question for Chief Glass regarding the blight. Is it possible to get like a monthly update on what's going on? Because it feels like nothing is really moving along except around River Street. And I don't know if the, like the cameras and the boats and whatnot fall under blight.
They fall under.
Quarter second of walnut looks like a dealership. I mean, they've got them in between houses and on the sidewalk and the driveways.
So, we have a blight report that the sergeant provided beginning of every month. If you like, I can forward that to council.
Okay.
Just so you're informed that the progress of that.
Okay. And do those cameras and trailers and stuff, do they fall under blight?
They fall under our zoning ordinance. So, our officers are trying to address that as well. But this year, we've had taken the approach to educate first because the majority of city residents don't know what the zoning ordinance is. And we prioritize those in terms of if you have an RV or camera on the road that causes a traffic obstruction, we try to prioritize those accordingly. What poses a danger, and we do it that way.
And you can't have car, you can't fix cars on the street, right? Like have them up on lifts and.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That was my only question for you. And I had a question for Jeff. The, the brush pickup? Is there any way to like put on like either Facebook or news ad again? People need to call you to pick up a brush? Because, I mean, there's brush piles that have been sitting there for months. But if they don't know to call you and you don't see it, then.
Yeah, we run that ad in the news adage probably at least a half dozen times throughout the year. And then one of our employees actually had the idea of putting it, putting the letters and the phone number on the side of the truck itself. So, we've done that and that's, that's been successful. And then we occasionally do put it through the Facebook page, but we can, we can certainly do that again.
Yeah, I just feel like a lot of, well, especially. Yeah, I just feel like a lot of people, especially if they're renting, they don't know. They take the brush and put it, I mean, you can sit there for all summer until somebody sees it. I, I know the caddies that can be calling, giving her addresses like every week.
But that helps, yeah. A lot of times neighbors will call or, or, you know, people will call us and say, why didn't they get picked up? So I'll take the opportunity right now. The city does brush pickup once a week on Fridays. And a resident just needs to call if they got brushed, that they generated from their property, not from a commercial business or a tree buddy operation. And then the city crews will schedule that and chip it up each week. If we have a huge list, sometimes we'll start a little bit early or we'll, we'll carry that in one day if necessary. But it's done on a weekly basis.
And then when are you done? Like November? Is that in November?
Usually, schedule lags usually, first part of November is when we officially stop. But we are then picking up leaves all through that month and our guys are out on the streets. If they start seeing it, then, or we get a lot, we still get calls, we'll still make, you know, smaller, smaller trips around.
I just have one, one question for Mr. Taylor. It has to do with vacation rentals and maybe you can help me out. If the state passes a law that says we can't regulate vacation rentals, how would that affect our ordinance?
You know, we can't regulate. The state law will trump the law every time. So if, if it's a state law that is regulating the same thing that the city was attempting to regulate, then the state law will control. There's sometimes our state laws and city ordinances or city legislation that might be slightly different or regulating different things and that can occur. But, but if it is a state statute on that particular topic, then yeah, that state law will trump the law.
So if I understand this correctly, the only way that we could have an ordinance if it was more strict than state law?
Well, that's certainly a possibility, sure. That'd be one area where we were being more strict than what the state statute provides. And in most cases, we can do that.
So we could spend hours working on the vacation rental ordinance and have it nullified and.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, I want to make sure I was understanding that term.
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? Was that motion to adjourn? Oh, I got cards.
So I, I apologize to like the three months worth of people who didn't get cards for either their anniversary date or their birthdays during the COVID. But we've started to back up, yes, so. Keith Garland? Laura Lorraine? Mark Hanson? Ed Bradford? Kristen Goodspeed? Tom Bruce? Kelly Owens? Okay, Kaylee? Kelly McCall? Okay. Mark Hanson? Okay. Jeff Krollcheck?
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you for all the information we received tonight. But then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion. Got a motion or adjourn?